Sure. We're coming for you for the council meeting, for a council meeting. We just wanted to say thank you for all the blessings being given to our community. Our community is very free, very wealthy, and we have a very functioning democracy. So this council represents that democracy where the will of the people gets heard and is implemented. We want to thank you for that. We just ask that you guide each council member in this meeting to consider what the needs of the community are and to show a servant's heart to the community. And I thank you for the example that your son, Jesus Christ, has provided for us, providing a servant's heart, a heart of humility. So again, I ask that you be still that onto all of our hearts and guide this meeting with no will, you know.
Thanks for the efficient communications and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five public hearing? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five public hearings have been approved. Are there any other sufficient communications or miscellaneous matters? Seeing none, we move on to board appointments. May I have a nomination for appointment to the St. Joseph County Onsite Wastewater Advisory Board? Did you see that select nominee in place for reappointment as the F R member of the St. Joseph County Onsite Wastewater Advisory? Thank you, Councilman Tandere. Are there any other nominations at this time? Just said like one, I want to clarify, Amy Place Jr. How to say that, very good, thank you. Hearing none, do I have a second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Amy Place Jr. is appointed to the St. Joseph County Onsite Wastewater Advisory Board. May I have a nomination for appointment to the Local Justice for Investment Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mr. anything.
You kind of, by Councilman Thomas. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. The motion passes eight to zero. Randall T. Page is appointed to the Local Justice for Investment Advisory Council. Congratulations, Councilman Page, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the L D party. Next, we need to nominate an individual for the Mishawaka Economic Development Commission. This is only a nomination as the mayor of Mishawaka will then make the appointment. May I have a motion to nominate whom?
This president, I'd like to nominate him. Or our nomination is like.
Thank you, Councilman Tanner. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. The motion passes eight to zero. Janet Whittaker Haidock is nominated to the Mishawaka Economic Development Commission. Report from the county auditorium.
No other important questions.
Report from the county commissions. Thank you, gentlemen. Report to any council special committee. They don't need to have any at this point. Next, our first reading, clerk, would you please read bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-five?
Appropriate the ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, fisher St. Joseph County auditorium.
All right, bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-five is assigned to the budget and administration committee. Clerk, would you please read bill number thirty dash twenty-five?
The ordinance demanding a supplemental Title XV land use schedule one fifty-four planning the building of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located in under stress forty five acres parcel immediately southwest of the intersection of Cleveland Road and Current Road, the page agricultural district, the I industrial district. Fishner Harry's big land operation, Bill LT.
Bill number thirty dash twenty-five is assigned to the land use planning committee. Clerk, would you please read bill number thirty-one dash twenty-five?
The ordinance approving this petition for a special use filed by Miller Family Development Company for property located one two five two five Anderson Road, here in township. Fishner Miller Family Development Company.
Bill number thirty-one dash twenty-five is assigned to the land use planning committee. Clerk, would you please read bill number thirty-two dash twenty-five?
The ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within uncorporate portion of St. Joseph County Public Record or Public Place. Fishner Greg Damm.
Bill number thirty-two dash twenty-five is assigned to the land use planning committee. In fact, includes first reading for this evening. Next on the agenda is a resolution. Clerk, would you please read bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-five?
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council, a nickname to the amendment to Title XV, to Title XV, Chapter one fifty-four, regarding the solar property value guarantee agreement. Petitioner Danny Chetwell.
This bill is designed to protect the value of owners' homes in the case of a small or large scale solar field is planned and then implemented within three miles of said homes. The area plan commission has asked for an opportunity to evaluate the proposed legislation and give a recommendation to the council. Given the fact that in the past, area plan has had the opportunity to evaluate and recommend on all regulations related to solar before it's filed out by the council, it is appropriate to follow that precedent with this piece of legislation. So I'm going to ask that we have a motion to send this to area plan. Are there any questions from council for me as a student? Right, hearing none. And given that there will be time for public comment at area plan, and when the bill returns to the council, we will go straight to a vote of the council. May I have a motion on bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-five? Motion to send a favor with the last, there is one question, last second. Motion made by Councilman Tandere and seconded by Councilwoman Hatt. To send bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-five to the area plan commission. Any further comments by any other council members? If you got open to Tandere.
He said, once this returns from the area plan commission, it goes straight to a vote for the council. There would be a hope it turns, I mean, yes, so it's doing it, you have to make it. Like it, any other questions?
Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Ratten?
Yes.
Ms. Tann? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tandere?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
President Chetwell?
Yes.
Pass the eight zero. But the record shows that bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-five passes eight to zero to be sent to the area plan commission. Next, our salary amendments. Clerk, would you please read bill number twenty-one dash twenty-five?
The ordinance demanding ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-four, the same thing in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-five. Petitioner prosecutors.
Ms. Tann, can you report, please?
Yes, yes, bill number twenty-one twenty-five, from the full council, the state of all places.
Thank you, Ms. Tann. Petitioner? Yes, Robber I D. Miller, with prosecutor's office, officers on the tenth floor of this building. The prosecutor is asking for an incorporation and salary ordinance from our annual grant for part-time students that are in, in a cybercrime unit. Notre Dame has reimbursed thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars for wages and for our salary benefits. It is funds originated from Notre Dame that have been deposited in the English reimbursement fund, forty-nine forty-two. All right. Are there any questions from council for the petitioners? Hearing none, we will open the public hearing on bill number twenty-one dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Right? Any further comments from council members? Hearing none?
Yes. Before we vote, does Mrs. Drake get the vote? No, Mrs. Drake does not get the vote. Mrs. Drake is not the council secretary or the officer of the council due to the lack of presence within the allotted period of time, the twenty-five hours based on the council. How many hours did she give? I don't know. Uh, maybe one, two. Well, let's think about that. It's maybe two, seven, something like that. So can the president override that? For the council? Mr. Vail, can the president override that? Other, other rules, committee?
That he doesn't require a suspension of the council rules in that entirety, which would require the unanimous vote by the council.
I tend to, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry to hear that. Because it's been that interim council rule that noted it twenty-four hours or more before the meeting, it would require a call to suspend the council rules and unanimous vote to approve that call. I think since there's constituents being to be heard, I think she should be allowed to vote. And I thought in front of the rules committee, don't overrule that. Mr. Vail, if I just will check on that. I think, I think, well, you know, wait for the available, um, pretty, really, well, I don't, we're gonna wear this, Mrs. Drake's absence. I mean, I don't, you're not here. Yeah, yeah, and I'm not, we're not. She's physically not here, and I haven't been here before either, zoomed in, and I voted before. We've, that was, I know in the past, I've done that, well, this way. I had this call, the president of the council gives a proper notice, and the reason for that is so we have an obstacle for them. Right, I, I, I know what you're saying, but I'm just thinking, the president, so sure, so her constituents, she would like to vote. I think her constituents should be heard on her vote. I, I, I don't know what I should know. I know, that's, that's, I, she, I don't think, do the twenty-four hour rule, and I didn't do the twenty-four hour rule, because I know I zoomed in before and I voted, I also, I always four D's with a three D's. It's twenty-four now in the new rule. So we relax the rule, that's all right. Is that right? So it appears that, you know, for whatever reason, she, she didn't get notice. It also appears that she is on Zoom. So I think if, if she is ready and able to participate in this meeting, and we make them take a vote, then? There's a mayor, I'm sorry, can I see? Mr. Vail, she's not checking that one?
Yeah, I'm just, for the new council rules, the council member who wishes to participate remotely shall notify at least one member of the council rules committee or secretary of the council of the new participants remotely every twenty-four hours in advance of commencement of the meeting.
So the president or the rules committee have no authority over that and can't overrule that?
Excepting on the second part. Councilman Tanner, where would you? I, my system is just that, that's embedded within the council rules, and to go against that twenty-four hour rule, it would require unanimous vote to suspend the council. And that was my question, where is your council rule to be having a suspension? I believe that if I can, yeah, the last section, for second to last section of it, I have fifteen or seventeen.
Very good. Yeah, I think I'll remind you last time, when President Luther, the types of search, so I was like, I'm reading you on, on this president, and I allow you, and you weren't, I could have denied you. I just said, yes, fifteen. That's what I did. I give the council secretary notice within twenty-four hours of the example that I have a rule that I made last year. You would, but, but a little so later, the secretary, the remotely. And I, I would want to jump to that, because my fault, I might need to. Right, my point was that the executives, you can say the secretary secretary, and that I had allowed, had given the executive secretary twenty-four hour notice. No, that was a rule. How the number, or you're? It's, I remember. Are you saying, Mr. Page, that you don't think it was in the rules? Now, it was my fault, I made that call, you said, one, my. I understand. My point is that I thought I had followed the rules, I let you set, set the note. If you don't follow this, it's the first. Mr. Bob?
Um, anything, uh, Karen, is, is a motion needed then to suspend the rule? To allow that, would it be the best step to allow it?
I think that's what they're wanting for now.
Yeah, just, just to make it abundantly clear, it is in Section fifteen of our new council rules that identifies the county council may suspend these rules upon unanimous approval of all members of the quorum or members of lack of the council presence, whichever is greater. That near our old council rules, there's nothing new about that, essentially the rules. Again, abundantly clear, for the remote participation, uh, ordinance, or rather, invented for a rule that was written by our past council attorney, uh, identified a twenty-four hour notice in advance of commencement of this meeting.
Is that an all, or is?
It says, "A council member who wishes to participate remotely shall notify at least one member of the council rules committee of them to participate remotely every twenty-four hours in advance." That was the old language that has been in place for roughly two years, which was carried over to our new language, which expanded it slightly to include the council secretary as a additional person who could be notified. So that was not, the timeframe is the same, the rules committee is the same, there's just one additional avenue provided, you know, it does not dictate that it's in writing or verbal.
And I don't have a rule under health, you can help, on that, Mr. Tanner, or Mr. Vail. I know on a remote participation in COVID, we had to physically, present on video. Is that part of the rule? That was part of the Indiana statute, that's.
You must have video and audio turned on.
Video and audio, okay. So, thank you. You're saying this was ruled last year, did not include the executive secretary if someone had notified?
That's correct.
Okay. So let's do this. Given the fact that Mr. Page was so gracious last year, and I appreciated that, Mr. Page, and has pointed out that he stepped outside of the rules to allow me to participate, why don't we go ahead and, and, let's go ahead, I'll make the motion to allow Mr. Page to participate. I'll say that.
Right. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Tann?
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, sir, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tandere?
At this point, we're voting to suspend the rules for, I don't, allow this.
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mr. Ratten?
Yes.
And Mr. Chetwell?
Yes.
Pass the nine zero. All right. Thank you. So, we are back to bill number twenty-one dash twenty-five. I need a motion to pass, bill number twenty-one dash twenty-five. Motion to pass, second. All right, we have a motion passed by Councilman Tandere, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, would you please take the roll? Mr. Thomas? Yes. Mr. Tandere?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner? Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ratten?
Yes.
You pass? President Chetwell?
Yes.
Pass the nine zero. But the record shows bill number twenty-one dash twenty-five passed by a vote of nine zero. Clerk, would you please read bill number twenty-two dash twenty-five?
The ordinance demanding ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-five, twenty-four, the same thing in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-five. Fishner Health Department.
Fishner? Fishner? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I am, yeah, thank you, Mr. Fishner.
Uh, we request to create a new position within the department of health of the assistant director of finance. This request is budget neutral, as we will be utilizing unused funds from two unfilled environmental health specialist positions.
Right, are there any questions in council for Fishner? Mr. Page?
The two unfilled positions, were they mission critical, or are there going to be a decrease? And the fact is, that's what they were doing, the life replacing or changing those positions?
One of the positions that is being eliminated was brand new to our budget this year, and it was created to monitor and be able to handle the property transfers that our unit used to have. Our legislature has gotten rid of things, our ability to look at property transfers and ensure water and sewer are available in the home. So that position is no longer needed, just because we don't have the ability to regulate the property transfers. And the other position, with the municipal gov hopefully coming out in the near future, will streamline the activities and having that additional position would not be needed.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas? Is this from HFI?
No.
Just, it's with our council?
Correct.
It's budget neutral, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bob?
And I agree that it's not, have you posted it yet, or go it yet, or?
No, we had a job description that's been approved by the board of health. We have no posting of it until after it has it today, and you have the permission and you will post it with the team.
Any other questions for Fishner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number twenty-two dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? All right. I do have a quick question for the petitioner. Did you fill this petition prior to asking council to read the petition?
Yeah, you were in the petition.
Okay, very good. Any further comments by any other council members? Right, hearing none, may I have a motion? Motion for approval by Councilwoman Hatt, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, would you please take the roll? Mr. Tandere?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ratten?
Yes.
You pass? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Chetwell?
Yes.
Pass the nine zero. But the record shows that bill number twenty-two dash twenty-five passed by a vote of nine zero. Clerk, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash twenty-five?
The ordinance demanding ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-four, the same thing in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-five. Petitioner Health Department.
Ms. Tann, committee report, please.
So, the bill number twenty-four twenty-five, Mr. Page, will stop for the senior vote.
Thank you, Ms. Tann. Petitioner?
Uh, we would like to create a assistant director of nursing position within the department of health. Uh, we do not have anyone in that position currently, the council is a budget neutral, which a fund within salary, you would like to be part of the other environmental health specialist that you will not be.
All right. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Thomas? Again, HFI or no, it's his county?
No, it's his county health department.
Budget neutral.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing on bill number twenty-four dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? All right. Any further comments by any other council members? All right, seeing none, clerk, would you please take the roll? Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ratten?
Yes.
You pass? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tandere?
Yes.
President Chetwell?
Yes.
Pass the nine zero. Thank you, but the record shows that bill number twenty-four dash twenty-five passed the council, nine to zero. Clerk, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash twenty-five?
The ordinance demanding ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-four, the same thing in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-five. Petitioner Probate Court slash JJC.
Ms. Tann, can I hear your report, please?
Bill number twenty-five twenty-five, will the full council vote in favor of voting?
Thank you, Ms. Tann. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. President, and this is the council. My name is J.J. Masters of the law firm, Indian King Masters in Tahiti, with offices at three fifty Columbia Street here in downtown South Bend. It is my privilege to speak to you this evening on behalf of St. Joseph County Court Judge Lawrence Zappia. There are three bills in forty-nine, so my comments will address all three bills. Each of them has to do with a different source, but they're all part of the same transfer. Judge Zappia asked if he approved his proposal, transfer funds within the salary budget for certain existing positions and positions with new titles and new responsibilities. The proposed changes are revenue neutral. The changes will not cost one nickel more. That has already been budgeted in the salary. Part of the organization of court to make it more efficient and more effective to fulfill its function. One fact that stands out in this discussion is that the probate court is just that. It is a court. It is unlike any of the other county agencies that come to forty, which are units of county executive branch or administrative branch. The probate court is a court, and as such, it is a co-equal, an independent branch of government. Under Indiana law, the judge of the probate court, as the juvenile court judge, is solely responsible for running the juvenile detention facility. All of the employees at the JJC are employees of the probate court. The judge operates the probate court. The judge appoints the staff, determines the budget, and is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the facility. The county is responsible for funding the operations of the juvenile facility. Pardon me one second. Lost up here with, unless something back there. See, in nineteen ninety-three, when the juvenile facility was ordered to be constructed by then St. Joseph Probate Court Judge Peter Hessman, there was an agreement between. there was an agreement between the county commissioners and the probate court, which says, in part, the juvenile detention facility will be operated by the probate court. The presiding judge will appoint staff and determine budgets, and may appoint advisory committee if need necessary. In short, with regard to the JJC, the county funds it, but the judge funds it. Under established statutory law case decisions, the salaries of the probate and juvenile court employees are set by the judge and the court. The county has the statutory responsibility to approve the salaries by appropriating the funds. The council does not have the authority to change the salaries fixed by the court. What Judge Zappia has presented to the council is a routine request to reallocate funds that have already been appropriated to set new salaries for various positions needed, in the judge's opinion, to best run the JJC. Judge Zappia is not asking the council to appropriate any additional funds over that which has already been appropriated for the salary positions. Your favorable action is requested. And if there are any questions, I'd try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Masters. Yeah, Mr. Thomas? Mr. Tanner? All right. I'd like to ask you anything?
I do have a question. Um, you remember the nineteen ninety-three agreement between commissioners about probate court judges? Can you read that one section where you said, um, I believe it was in the effect?
Actually?
It mentioned that the court, you said the court, I didn't hear the difference.
Actually, it's two sections I'd like to read here.
Yeah, the one section you mentioned, the court, you spent a lot of time to hear that. The juvenile detention facility will op- will be operated by the probate court.
Okay.
And the presiding judge will appoint staff and determine budgets, and may appoint advisory committees if need necessary. I would also point out to you, the section that says, "The probate court is authorized by Indiana Code to establish juvenile detention and shelter care facilities for children, but all expenses shall be paid by the county." When the facility was built in nineteen ninety-three, there was a cooperative effort between the judge of the court and the commissioners to decide the budget for constructing the building, the design of the building, the contractor, the architect, everything that had to do with the construction of the building. And once the building was built, it was turned over to the probate court for what? Because by law, only a juvenile court judge can order the construction of a juvenile facility. That's because the juvenile facility is an arm of the court. It is part of the remedies that a court, a juvenile court has to deal with the juvenile offender. You know, I like to say, if we, if I can bore you with this, you know, our juvenile code goes back to late to nineteen twenties where the first thing the code says the court is supposed to do with the juvenile offender is send him home, his or her home to their parents to be spanked with the bed without the cell. And still, the requirement, the first remedy is to return them to their home. And then the next is, um, non-reporting probation, and then probation, and maybe an ankle break, and then filing confinement to a juvenile facility. Now, we all know statistics have changed dramatically in the last hundred years, and oftentimes, using the juvenile facility as the first resort to either protect the public from the juvenile offender or to protect the juvenile offender from the home environment. But in any event, that's why only a juvenile court judge can order the construction of the facility because only the juvenile court judge is responsible for operating it. And that's the division of our government. State courts, and the probate court is one of the state courts, the state trial courts, which are the county courts, are state judicial, um, courts. But they are funded historically by the county. And so the probate court is no different. It is a function of the state judiciary, but the county is responsible for funding the operation. Now, um, did we pass out to them? What we tried to do is summarize the ordinance because it's a lot of different pieces moving around here. Uh, but the point is that there is no increase in the amount of money that's being allocated to the salary. It's simply because of changes in responsibility, some of the salaries are being changed, some of the positions are eliminated, some of the positions are expanded. And if it, and so we're here simply to ask your approval, which would usually be a routine matter that wouldn't take up this much time from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Masters. I would point out that you're right, three different bills, it is confusing, new titles, new positions. Um, it would have been nice to get this a little earlier than fifteen minutes before we started. Um, I haven't been able to look at it, but I have had the time over the course of the last couple of weeks to really dive into what is written here. So I do understand where the money is going. Um, so I think, I think if council members had the time, we probably do have this understanding, but it would have been nice to get that a little bit earlier. I'll ask any other council members, have any questions? Mr. Tanner, or I'm sorry, um, Mr. Rattlin?
Um, yeah, so just a, a quick question. How many other, there's ninety-two counties in Indiana, how many other counties are required, or I should say, elect their, their probate court judge?
Saint Joe County is the last county in the state of Indiana to have a separate court called a probate court. Uh, there were other counties in the past. The probate court, however, has the same jurisdiction as the Superior Court and the Circuit Court with regard to all civil matters. In this county, however, the probate court is the juvenile court. And by statute, it has exclusive jurisdiction over juvenile offenders. So to answer your question, it's only county that has a probate court named as such, but a number of the counties have, all the other counties have elected superior and circuit court judges, and some of those counties, one of those elected superior court judges is designated to be the juvenile court judge.
Okay, so sounds like Saint Joe County is, uh, unique in Indiana for its current arrangement.
In, in having a court named the probate court, that's true, but not in having a juvenile court judge who's responsible for operating a juvenile facility. Did that, did I answer your question?
Yes.
That helped you out.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, President. Mr. Masters, it's my understanding that the fact that we have a separate name, probate court, uh, was by way of state legislation ordering Saint Joe County to create a probate court. Uh, is my understanding that correct your knowledge?
That, that, that you have three days, Lee.
Definitely.
It goes back quite a number of years.
That's just my parlay in saying that it, it may have been out of our control to create it, but it's fear it's serving that distinct purpose. And it's, again, my understanding, uh, with or without your confirmation, is that it was a, a state legislative action that established the probate court, which?
Well, yes, there's no question that it's set, set by state law, and it goes back quite a number of years. And, and other counties had a probate court, they've simply assimilated them into the superior court system.
Thank you for that. I did have a question with regard to the, the documents that were particularly, uh, before me. Um, is, is this the information, I know there was a tour as well, but is this the information that was shared with and discussed, uh, with council members who attended a meeting prior to this council meeting this evening? You know, maybe not in this format, but was this information discussed at that?
Actually, no, this was, we did this after we were done meeting with the council members, that the question came up. Could you summarize it for us a little bit better? And so that, we put this together to bring it to you here this evening. It's only been, we met at four, four-thirty, uh, so it's not like anybody else had a chance to go over this in any great detail. This is the summary of the ordinance. And we thought we could try to put it together in a way that was a little more easily, easy, easy to follow.
I, I just wanted to clarify, for the, for two parts to do, please give me some grace in that. Um, the document itself wasn't presented, it wasn't ready, uh, to present at that meeting at four P M., but the budget transfers and the salary request was discussed?
I don't think we went over it in any detail at all. The more, more of the discussion was, who seemed to me talked about the history of the court and, and the division of, uh, the, the different branches of government and then talk about, um, and then actually, I think members had a chance to tour, you say this is.
Well, to that end, it was kind of a setup through a statement for me, um, perhaps a question for a council attorney. Based on emails and invitations, it described it as an opportunity to discuss the budget and the salary transfers, uh, or sorry, the salaries and budget transfers. Uh, so, uh, apologies for my lack of attendance, but it was out of, uh, uh, abundance of precautions that we were talking about information germane. The information was presented to us at that meeting that was germane to our vote tonight. I was concerned about us having authority to counsel presence and being in violation of open door policies. Uh, so I elected not to come out of an abundance of concerns with that. Uh, but I do appreciate the invitation and would like the opportunity at some point in time to figure out on that offer.
I, I think the representative, you say, you seem very happy to give me a tour, whether by yourself or with other, uh, council members. I don't, the discussion concerning the budget was only in general terms, I don't think we got into any of the numbers specifically.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, in the same place, but you might understand my.
Oh, no, I, I follow what you're saying, how it explains, um, why you weren't there.
Thank you.
So, I think you weren't being cautious. Councilor, no.
I was just to follow up, uh, with Matthew on, uh, Mr. Panzai's point. It definitely, you know, the student count, he's still moving, and she says it opened doors, same thing. Uh, finding out later in the day, we might have been able to do that. But apparently, there was some discussion enough a way to put these questions together, and put these different reasons together, towards denying it, because you said there's words, you know, really disformed on you. You put it together after the questions that were raised, and they're moving at four o'clock.
I, I think that, that if I recall, the discussion was, is there, is there something that summarizes what your requests are? Because we have these salary ordinances. And I had something that had been prepared for me to summarize this, and I suggested, well, why don't we take what has been prepared by another member of Judge Zappia's staff from me to help me figure this out and summarize it and hand it to the council members tonight?
Yeah, and you sort of been helping with the community.
I, I appreciate that now. Okay.
Mr. Thomas? Thank you for coming, Mr. Masters. I think you were very well explained, and your staff did a great job today, and they did a great job last time they were here. Uh, very thorough, very common sense, budget neutral, won't make surprises. Uh, you'll probably be coming back to us again for something unfair, but, uh, money transfers and so forth, and, and that's very routine. And, uh, uh, I want to, I appreciate your staff, yourself and your staff when they were here, they did a great job, and so did the judge. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, that's kind of you to say.
Anyone else? Mr. Tanner?
Mr. Masters, there is a federal decision that was rendered upon the Juvenile Justice Center back in twenty, I'm guessing, our year, twenty seventeen or eighteen, regarding, regarding the juvenile detainee, uh, by the initial W. And that, I don't understand, was the decree, was the decision that was rendered, and it came to be a decree. Um, dictated a ratio of detention staff to detainees, and we on the council were forced to increase detention staff as a result of that decision that was rendered. Um, I see in this proposal, there's three detention staff, which, in the explanation I just went over, says they were traditionally employees, but I understand they still have detention responsibilities. Is there anything with these transfers that's going to differentiate the federal order that we're bound by, that we had to increase the staff in order to keep the ratio of detained detention staff at a certain percentage or a certain number?
Uh, my understanding is the judge Zappia's staff is what's that, and that's why, I guess.
So we won't, in violation of that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I can answer it, we are not violating.
If you come to the mic, please. And identify yourself.
Alton, I am the compliance chair for the JJC and probate court, and I just want to assure you, um, we also have the head of security here, and he justified me that they are aware of that ruling and are not in violation. I just wonder what you know.
Thank you, Alton. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, seeing none, I do have a couple of questions myself. It's, um, Mr. Masters, I'm trying to understand, um, why, given the fact that Judge Zappia's predecessors, as far back as any council members here can remember, followed the same budget process as any other any county, uh, department does. I'm trying to understand why Judge Zappia chose not to do that. Representatives of Judge Zappia had a meeting at the auditor's office on December seventeenth and January seventh. I believe these names were Mary Ann Tucker and Griffin Nate. Since Tucker is an understandable participant, given her hire as senior advisor, Griffin Nate is a portable operative for Rudy Yakum. What expertise did he bring to the meeting, given the fact that he was eventually not hired by the judge?
I'm not, I don't understand how to answer that, I'm not aware. Why do you? Point of order? Point of order, what does that have to do with us funding this? We're gonna get there. In these meetings, and as explained in an email from Andy Doyle, the auditor's office, to Ms. Tucker, Mr. Nate, and Judge Zappia, the auditor's office explained how to implement reorganization to Ms. Tucker and Mr. Nate. He's included the process for creating new positions and changing budgets. Um, I'm curious as to why the judge chose not to follow the process when creating four new positions and changing the budget. Well, my knowledge, it took some time to get familiar with what's going on in the JJC and what needs to be done and what changes need to be made. Okay, and that would be the response. Okay. So some of those changes were made in January. I do, I do, I was trying to find the reason, and I found rule number sixty point five. And it says, "A court need not wait to take action until the court's operation actually has been impaired, but may act once there is a clear and present danger of impairment from the court's operation." Um, so I'm just curious, if this, if Judge Zappia felt like the court would be, he would be impaired if he didn't make these changes quickly?
Um, point of order? Do you are, well, I'm.
Point of order, is there a state statute, Mr. Ozawa, about timing of any of this? There's no state statute, is there? They can wait till, uh, August, I mean?
They find one regarding timing, and you found the one that said probate court may appoint a chief clerk and other employees who's, uh, who sort of necessary, these salaries shall be fixed by the judge and paid out of the county's property.
So the answer is no. Mr. Thomas, I'm trying to find out why Mr. Zappia chose not to follow the same precedent as the judge before him.
Point of order, again, it's not state law, it's not county law. Mr. Masters, the other question for me.
What's your top of that? When you're citing rule sixty point five?
Yes.
You're citing the, that section of the Indiana Rules of Trial that you do to give a judge the authority to issue a mandate, the mandate the county council will appropriate funds for a position. Well, we're not here on a mandate, I understand. And, and that, that which you read, that is, uh, court doesn't have to wait till there's an emergency, uh, to issue the mandate. It really has some application here now.
Okay.
Uh, I can understand why you, when you look at that, but it, it's really not something that, that we're dealing with now. There's not a mandate action here.
Okay.
Where the judge finds, you know, a position where he has to order the county to appropriate funds and pay a position because there's some need that has to be filled.
I understand, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I clearly didn't totally understand that. But what, you understand what I'm trying to figure out, because of the precedent of the judges before him coming to the council first, asking for the positions he created, I'm, I'm just curious as to why Judge Zappia chose not to do that.
Well. Well, I, I get part of this is a reorganization where you've got a new judge who comes in, uh, after, after I guess twelve years of other, uh, judges. You know, I used to joke for thirty years, you had a judge who was named Pete, um, and Eva, between Pete's father and himself. And then you had Judge Fox return, Judge Chikowicz return, and now Judge Zappia comes in. And he's necessarily making some changes to suit the way he wants to run the court. And I don't think that there's really a timing issue. I mean, I, you know, I'm not here to repeat, but I've been in and out of here where in the middle of July, people are making, uh, transfers of funds between salary buttons to accommodate positions. Um, so I'm not sure that this is, timing is a big issue here.
Well, the creating of new positions that I'm referring to.
Well, but that's within the judge's prerogative to do.
I understand. Again, I'm just going back to what has been the precedent with previous setting. Let me move on. Um, we have a lot of new positions here for at least, and these are, um, executive level positions. And we're, and I'm kind of going back to something that has been, um, these positions are being funded by removing, uh, positions that are more face-to-face positions. Uh, that would be like the psychologist rest hours for the chaplain, um, and for the other positions that work directly with the young men. My question is, what's the, what is, what's the logic behind, um, sacrificing the face-to-face interaction to become more administratively heavy in the organization? Is there a reason for that?
I think that you make an assumption from the petition, Duriel, that, uh, face-to-face contact with the juveniles at the facility is somehow already being sacrificed and impaired by these changes. And not recognizing that the judge, who's there every day as his staff, knows what these people do and what is needed to the juveniles that are in their charge. And in fact, they look at this as being a way of providing more, um, contact and more services to the juveniles at the facility rather than less.
More contact even though we're removing free detention officers, the psychologist and reducing the chaplain.
Because the other people are, who are assigned are doing similar positions, are doing similar work sometimes. There, there is this, when we say this is revenue neutral, it's certainly not asking for any additional money. It is also not curtailing any services or taking away the services that affect the well-being of the juveniles in the facility.
I'm gonna, you shared a story and I'm gonna share one with you. And I hope this helps you to understand and I hope it helps the judge to understand why I'm so passionate about this. I'm a teacher. I used to teach at a South Bend school. I'm gonna tell you about two young men that I taught. One of them, um, fifteen years old, already drove to school, had his own van, we weren't sure whose van it was. Um, and it was in my class, a student difficult to get to focus. One day I gave them a, uh, uh, I gave them a kind of a rough time about constantly talking to the ladies and not being focused. The next day he brought a gun to school. That was first semester and he was suspended for the rest of the year. Um, that young man, the next summer, went to Indianapolis to visit one of his stepbrothers, got involved in a drug deal, got shot six times and then he was dead. Right? Another young man who I taught, um, second semester, uh, got involved in an altercation in the hallway and tried to break it up and hit him. He was suspended for the rest of the semester. That summer, he and some of his friends cornered another young man in South Bend. And although the student I had did not shoot the young man, someone else in his group did murder him and that young man is in jail for the rest of his life. So I have, you know, and I think about, especially the second one, what could I have done differently as a teacher? Make a difference in that young man's life? How could I have handled that fight differently so that he wouldn't have felt like he had to assault me? Right? And so from my teaching experience, I have somewhat of a passion for seeing a system that works well in helping these young men turn their lives around so they don't end up shot in a drug deal, they don't end up in prison for the rest of their lives. Um, and that's why I'm passionate about this and I want to ask as many of these questions as I can. So I hope you understand.
Well, you know, not only do we understand, it's, it's helpful. And, and might I suggest that with the experience you have, you know, you may be in a position to get some insight with Judge Zappia. You may be in a position to help him, uh, in terms of the way he, uh, he approaches the operation of the JGC. And, and I think the two of you ought to get together more, uh, to, to discuss that. The discussion would be of interest.
Well, I would love to do that. I don't pretend to be able to tell the judge how to do his job. But I'll extend the invitation right now. I would love to sit down with Judge Zappia, clear the air, I think he knows what I'm talking about, and have a constructive working relationship.
I think everybody would benefit from that.
I agree. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um, I do have two more points to make. One is, um, under the past administration, you did not have some of these executive level positions. And however, under the past administration, we did use a time part system. Um, let's hope I get this one right. The State Board of Account stated in its April twenty nineteen bulletin that, quote, "The perspective timekeeping issued is our quod position that although a county judge cannot be required to use time reporting system utilized by county employees, the judge must require his employees to document their time works and he must allow the payroll claims for the court employees as required by Indiana Code five dash eleven dash ten dash one point six." So, um, yeah, how is, I, I spoke with the auditor's office and they are not getting, um, any kind of time information, uh, on some of these positions. So I am asking, how is Judge Zappia going to satisfy paperwork of county rule, Indiana Code? Um, we want, and, and the reason I ask this is, is for this reason. Um, we want to make sure that taxpayers don't look at the situation and because we have people not reporting time, um, start to accuse the judge and his people of dosing.
Start to?
Well, we don't want them to do that, so.
There are a hundred and fifty employees at the Juvenile Justice Center. Twenty-five of them are in, uh, executive level positions that are not required punch of time clock. Uh, as you may know, most executive level positions are not required to punch a time clock because they're salve and they often work beyond the thirty or forty hours a week that they're allotted for the day. Um, I can, I can recite to you those same aggressive operations.
I don't need you to do that, sir, because I think, well, then I, then I am just understanding that my understanding is that elected officials do not have the punch of time clock. And maybe, um, executive level positions don't have the punch of time clock, but my understanding from the State Board of Accounts is they have to turn in something that represents the time that they work. And, Mr. Auditor, am I correct?
That's what the bulletin says, yes.
Okay. So that's what the State Board of Accounts called them.
Well, then, then that's something we take into consideration.
Can we take a look at that? That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Certainly the suggesting governor, the president of the council, are we going to say no?
I, I, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Um, one last point. I am concerned about the perception that the following relationships could create. Um, Brandy Roy is the founder and CEO of Integrity Investigations and is now chief of staff at the JGC. Um, my understanding is that Madison Gabbert, who is our new human resource director, works for Integrity Investigations also, um, that at one point, Mary Ann Tucker worked for Integrity Investigations. Um, and that Mary Ann, Andrea and Rachel Lucan have been friends for a significant period of time. Um, I know we don't have a law against employment in the case of these types of relationships, but I do believe it is in the public interest of Judge Zappia that he make available to the council and the citizens the process to use, um, to hire to these individuals so we don't end up with a negative perception of how these individuals, uh, came to work together, given their previous relationships. And that is my last comment.
I'd rather, I'd rather just suggest.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I am just asking that we be careful that, that suggestions tend to make and just ask that if the hiring process is, if we understand the hiring process, then there can be no suggestion.
You know, as, as we have been discussing here, um, your, uh, suggestions, your meeting with Judge Zappia may go a long way without some of these issues being clarified.
I agree.
And, and I think that's, I think the two of you should both work on doing that.
I'm trying, sorry. Thank you. Any further comments can tell me. Mr. Thomas.
Um, as I was able to go next to the, um, meeting and I will say I was a little concerned at first that there was more than five of us and one of us, exactly, but we didn't have that problem. Um, and I appreciate exactly that you are here. I just wanted to acknowledge that because that was one of my statements that I had said last, not the last time. Um, so I appreciate that you are here. I appreciate the, the tour. Um, while I still have some of the similar questions and concerns, I do feel better of thinking that there will be more of a working relationship and I, I appreciate that. So I look forward to working together and doing what's best for the case. So at the end of the day, um, that is what's most important in your position.
Thank you, Ms. Shabat. So, hold on. Ms. Craig, do you want to make a comment? Oh.
Um.
Yeah, Ms. Craig, go ahead.
Mr. Shetzel, uh, you discussed clearing the air. Um, I think it's important to note here, um, it, it's, it, we don't want to get into politics, but it's clear what's going on is politics. Um, this hazing that you're having Judge Zappia go through is, um, unnecessary for a budget that does not entail any new spending. Um, for background, um, Mr. Shetzel was made a Republican not in good standing because he did not support Judge Zappia, who was a Republican candidate.
What does this have to do with, does it have anything to do?
It has, it has the same thing. I have a right to speak, just as you did when you discussed political operatives.
Has nothing to do with Bill.
And it, it has everything to do with it because all of these questions that are you are continuing, Mr. Shetzel, may I please speak?
Well, if you will, if you will question the petitioner, you are not there to lecture me, you are there to question the petitioner. Question the petitioner.
I'm here to put regular comments onto the agenda and my comments are that the comments you are making are harassing because of political reasons.
Make your question to the petitioner, please.
Ms. Xandora. Mr. Masters, um, one question I do have on bill one five twenty-five, um, is the creation of a human resource director. Some, a couple of previous, I've been around the formation of current JGC in nineteen ninety-seven, a little background. Some judges have shown to have a human resources director and more recently we have not. At times, there was often times when there was an HR director establishing a better rule to JGC that differs from federal rules that people in CCB or Superior Court operated under because they're under the county HR director. These are at plan, please, to make sure that the rules are consistent, that, you know, how, how does that person work with the county HR director? How, how are they going to interact?
Well, I have some experience because I've been around for so long. I was in Judge Newman's counsel for twenty-one years and then, uh, my son-in-law was, uh, Judge Fox, who was counsel for six years. Um, and I probably was, was part of that HR manual or defended in the court. The appellate court necessarily has some, uh, employment rules that are different from the county because it is, after all, a secure facility with children. And so the type of person who's hired to be a detention officer or probation officer may not be the same person who works for the county highway department, but he may be the same community for that matter. So there's going to be some rules that are different. Um, but there should, there will be, and I think there is, coordination on some of the other, um, county, uh, personnel rules that are not specific to operating a secure juvenile facility holidays, that sort of thing.
So, so the answer is, it's a little bit of both.
Okay. Matt, I know our deal with a detention facility for adults, you know, operating with the county rules, um, they may have some specific rules too, I hear, for you regarding that detention facility. They haven't been able to operate with the county HR department, serving as their HR director. I just wanted to know if there will be a coordination between the two because of, you know, the difference in physical location from one thousand, how Michigan does, uh, to that one.
I think you will find there'll be coordination where coordination makes sense for the JGC. And there'll be different roles where there are, where there's a need for different roles.
Thank you.
Ms. Craig, you have a question for the petitioner?
Yeah, so, um, I guess I, I think what I'm asking is a, is a point of work question. We, we were asking the petitioner questions, I thought only, and then it seemed like we started progressing into discussion. Um, so can we get some clarification on what we're doing right now? What we're, what are the petitioner's questions? Everyone has been asking questions. And then once, once we're done asking the petitioner questions, we then afterwards will proceed to, uh, the public hearing. Only a discussion we're having right now.
I thought there was a discussion, right? There's a discussion too, right?
Uh, we're not giving answers.
After, when, after what? Do you have, uh, questions?
I do.
Okay.
I, we're not here to micromanage you, Mr. Masters or the judge or staff. That's the judge's staff, not ours. We're in budgetary concern. And the micromanaging can never end.
What's, what's the question?
And I just want you to know that I appreciate your patience during this and everyone knows what's going on here. Thank you.
I thought you meant to say everyone knows I'm not very patient. Yeah. No, if you have questions. Ms. Craig.
Um, Ms. Masters, thank you. Um, thank you, Judge, and your representatives to being here and for presenting us this information. It's a two-way, but it's all been helpful. Um, my, my question is related to the budget request itself. Um, in my outreach to the auditor's office, I became aware that, uh, people were hired to be newly-prepared positions in as early as January first, but also in, in January. Uh, I have no problem with that from the standpoint of, again, the judiciary, uh, as dictated by state law, is an innovative, equal government entity. Um, and there is the right to make these appointments and to operate and run the facility, the court and all court-related activities accordingly. And that likely, by all accounts, follows exactly what the judge has the right to do and the court has the right to do. Um, but, uh, do you believe that the attempt by the auditor's office to proactively inform of the process wasn't just to inform the judge of the precedent in the process, but also to ensure that the auditor's office could administer payroll and compliance with their mandate, uh, or their requirements within Indiana Code? Because it, it, it is a two-way street. You believe that they may have been pressured to make payroll that was in violation of our salary ordinance and therefore in violation of Indiana. our salary ordinance and therefore in violation of Indiana code by complying with federal orders, sorry, Fair Labor Standards Act, to pay these people in unapproved positions? Before I answer that question. Andrew?
The answer to the question, what I wanted to confirm is that people are being paid based on what is currently open. Nobody has been paid based on the request for the changes. That is an excellent clarification. What's been appropriated for the positions that were already existing, yes. And an adjustment will be made, assuming that we approved this retroactively for that that thing. That is the hope. Yes.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's correct. I mean, I think that the petition has been created higher.
My understanding from the response I got from the auditor's office was that according to the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, people must be paid what they were promised to be paid when hired, and that's the action that the auditor's office is responsible for processing payroll must do. They're also required because of salary ordinance. And that's another bulletin from the state board of account, dictating that payroll must match approved physician, you know, if that was approved. Thank you. All right. Any other questions to the petitioner?
Yeah, I have four more questions. Ms. Masters, you ready?
Yep.
Okay. So I hear comments about past precedents, okay, but then I'm still, you know, mindful that probate court is just unique and operates differently from all the other departments in St. Joe's County. And is it possible that past precedent could have exceeded what was minimally required by state law?
Well, I'm not sure. I can't answer that because I don't know what everything every judge has done. I know what I was responsible for for quite a number of years and what our office was responsible for 28, 27 years. I'm not sure I can speak for the last six years. So I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer to that. I know that, at least when I was counsel for the court and somewhat, followed what the statute said. Now, the difference here is now is you have, you know, a kind of change of not only a judge, you have kind of change of attitude and a change of views in terms of administering the JGC. And so that's why Judge Zapia wants to change some of these positions, change their responsibilities, and with it, change some of the compensation.
Okay, yeah, that's fair. I was kind of asking a secular question, so may get that help for discussion.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll open the mic up for public comment. I name it to Masters. Public comment on bill number 25-25. Is there anyone in the room would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number 25-25. Any further comments from council members? Ms. For Tan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by saying that I'm going to vote in favor of this. I think it's important for the judge to have the rela, the authority granted by state law to operate in court and the court-related facilities that are the voted on. He's elected to do a job, he's doing it the way that he, or in any other situation, he needs to be. What I, what I want to make as a statement kind of as a follow-up to my immediate questions to Mr. Masters, though, is that I won't say that we don't care about respect, or I don't care about respect to the council. There's a process that is expected. I'm not offended by that, but where my empathy, sympathy, thought process went, as we were considering these, was to reach out to the auditor's office. I felt that what had infiltrated us is that they were very proactive in informing what the process is expected to be, not because they prefer it that way, but because it needs to be that way for them to operate within compliance of both federal and state law. I'm not here to say they're stick up for the auditor's office necessarily, but it strikes me that the request was made two months after hires were made. Again, I think they're necessary. I'm going to trust you that they're necessary exactly as presented. But I ask for that opportunity to, for that two-way communication and for the respect to go both ways with all departments, whether that be the council, the auditor's office, or otherwise in the future. But I keep planning to vote in favor of this petition.
All right.
Ms. Shetzel.
Yes.
One point on the ordinance is we want to make that natural act to, to debate a hire as the only approach to get the consent. All right, so the motion will be up and may be made with verbiage that makes it retroactive, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, council members?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments. Yeah, so we talked a lot about how the courts are a separate branch of government, separate but equal, so there needs to be independence there. And interestingly, the St. Joe's County Probate Court elects judges in normal elections, which by my understanding is unique in the state of Indiana. Elected officials should have an extra mandate within the county government, and so Judge Zapia really has both of these. But that kind of makes this a little bit challenging because I think for all of the departments in the county, you know, that they really need to fall under the county council's fiscal oversight responsibilities. So I don't know that we're going to sort this out. I think it's just maybe an imperfection in Indiana state law, but I think going forward, cooperation is key, that we would just like to, you know, get timely information from the probate court, just like the other departments, and we would just like to enthusiastically support them, just like all the other departments. Judge Zapia just got elected, this department's huge, so I think, you know, where there's gray area there, we provide latitude, and hopefully, you know, going forward, this latitude, this gray area is provided back to this county council. So I also plan on voting in support of these bills. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rutt. Ms. Gray, is your hand up?
Yes, it's up. I would just like to, I would just like to reiterate that I'm sorry that this has turned into such an inquisition for a judge who is able to make his own choices about how he wants to run his court, was elected to do that, and at the beginning of every term, you need to do what you think is best to serve the juveniles in your facility. And to see the political game playing today on the dais is really disappointing, as most people are not put through such a political game show when they're just trying to do their jobs. And the political games should end, and Judge Zapia should be able to do his work without the inquisition. Thanks.
Any other comments?
All right, I do have a comment. First of all, I think the members of this council, most of them, we take our responsibility to guard the budget of this county very seriously. We owe it to the taxpayers of this county to ask questions, to make serious inquisitions into how money is being spent. And so we do ask tough questions sometimes, and I think I can remember several department heads who went through more grilling than Mr. Masters had to answer to here as representative for Judge Zapia. I do also plan on voting for this bill. I, I hope that Judge Zapia and I are able to get together and clear the air and have a constructive working relationship. I know the judge's brother is a fine man, and if he's anything like his brother, I'm sure we'll get along smashing him. I would like to also thank Mr. Zaila for his work this week. I have lots of questions for him this week, and he always answered my questions in a timely manner and helped me to better understand the law. Any other comments at this point?
Ms. Xandrea. I would give a counterpoint, I think it's such a, the reference that was made to political governance, because for me, it's not, I've been on council a long time, and we have a process and a procedure. We've had newly-elected officials take over our offices, and they have come in a timely manner and made presentations. But to make the assertion that we're up here doing things intentionally in the name of political governance, it's not true. We just want to answer, we want to make sure the JGC is staffed properly, that our kids are safe, and to run properly, and it's just an exception. When Mike Tappon came in, he may give us a presentation before he did office, he had one election board member, he already got a little bit of a December, and given us an idea of what he wanted to do in the office, we had an idea. So it's happened differently and differently, so I take exception to the comment that the political governance is not. Thank you.
Just, I would add, Ms. Xandrea, you know, any county department head, a new department head, a newly-elected official comes in and makes massive changes, as Judge Zapia has done, it's our job to ask the hard questions. That's what we're supposed to do. And I believe Mr. Masters did a fine job of handling those questions, and I'm sure in the direction of Judge Zapia. Any other comments?
Mr. Tompkins, you cannot, I just want to be clear, other department heads, newly-elected officials, you can't paintbrush anybody on when they should be coming in. Everybody has it, every new department head, every auditor, the assessor, probate court judge, the clerk, they all have different things going on. You can't paintbrush what's going on with every single department. They should be here by the first of the year. Everybody is different, especially the judge's job, as important as we all know that is. So I think it's wrong that we're just sitting there thinking that whatever else would come in in a timely manner, you should too. I disagree with that, especially since there's no ordinance, there's no state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Ms. Tanner.
What there is, the state law that mandates how the auditor's office follows the state board of accounts for making payroll and for putting a physician that was in conflict between following state law and federal law to abide by these positions because they were hired before they were formally approved. I don't think it has big of a formality and an issue due to the fact that it is by legal, and that's why I'm voting in favor of it and making it retroactive. I think that's very reasonable. I wish the request could come in earlier this year because it would have allowed for less non-compliance during that period of time. Is the judge and the probate court out of that compliance? It doesn't appear to be so, and I'm happy about that. But I think it puts undue pressure on other elements of our county government to be out of compliance or in conflict between different levels of government and make it in compliance with one while sacrificing the other. That's an important issue that I think is a lesson to be learned, rather than somebody to be risked over the whole, it is a learning process, just like it is up here for the United States. So let's have some grace for each other and get past that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion on bill number 25-25? Make the motion to pass bill number 25-25, make it retroactive. County office. Second, all right, we have a motion from Ms. Big to make bill number 25, to pass bill number 25-25 and to make it retroactive as suggested by our county auditor. And the second, my councilman, Rutt. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
I need a clarification that it is retroactive to the date of hire. Do you need that specificity?
I would, I would put that in there, yes.
Ms. Big would like to clarify, the date of hire.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner and Ms. Big. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Big?
Yes.
Ms. Shabbat?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Rutt?
Yes.
Ms. Tapp?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Xandrea?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Shetzel?
Yes.
Pass with nine to zero. Thank you. On the record show, the bill number 25-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read bill number 26-25?
An order pending order 76-24, the same being in order to establish salaries and fixing the numbers employed in St. Joe's County for the year 2025. Petitioner Probate Court, JGC.
Ms. Tapp, can any report, please?
Thank you, Detective. All council members.
Thank you, Ms. Tapp. Petitioner.
Excuse me, James Hes, on behalf of Judge Zapia. May I ask that we just rewind the page of the last hour and a half? Yes. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the council for the petition? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing on bill number 26-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 26-25. Any further comments by any council members? I will ask, do we need to make this one retroactive also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
I'd like to take the motion to approve bill number 26-25 to pass it retroactive to the date of hire.
Yes. We have a motion by Ms. Tanner to approve bill number 26-25 retroactive to the date of hire, and seconded by Ms. Big. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Shabbat?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Rutt?
Yes.
Ms. Tapp?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Xandrea?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Big?
Yes.
Ms. Shetzel?
Yes.
Pass with nine to zero. Well, the record shows that bill number 26-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read bill number 27-25?
An order pending order 76-24, the same being in order to establish salaries and fixing the numbers employed in St. Joe's County for the year 2025. Petitioner Probate Court, JGC.
Ms. Tapp, can any report, please?
Thank you, bill number 27-25, from Detective Council, Detective Ball, presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tapp. Petitioner.
Evening. I need to say, Ms. Big, on behalf of the judge's staff, may I ask that we could read it to the record our earlier presentation and discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Masters. Thank you. Are there any questions from council for the petition? Having none, we will open the public hearing on bill number 27-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, are there any further comments by any other council members? Hearing none. Hearing none, may I have a motion? Motion to approve Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-five retroactive to the date of hire. Second, motion to approve Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-five retroactive to the date of hire was made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by, by Councilman Thomas. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Big?
Yes.
Mr. Rotten?
Yes.
Mr. Tass?
Yes.
Mr. Talis?
Yes.
Mr. Tandray?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Big?
Yes.
Mr. Shabaz?
Yes.
President Cheswell?
Yes.
Pass with nine to zero. Thank you. On the record show, the Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-five was passed by a vote of nine to zero. And one more time, Mr. Masters, thank you for your job today. Next is public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill number twenty dash twenty-five? Amending and transferring money to the district here in sacrifice of the federal departments here enlisted in San Jose County Department of Labor. Because all fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at its March 2025 committee meeting, we will meet directly the public comments on Bill number twenty dash twenty-five, Part A through ten. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number twenty dash twenty-five. Any comments by council? Yeah, I, I have a- Mr. Rotten? Thank you. Um, the question, uh, Mr. Murphy, are you the sponsor of this?
These are a summary of all the fiscal bills, including salary ordinances you just approved, along with some other bills that didn't retain the salary ordinances. It's kind of like a summary of all the fiscal matters for the month.
Okay, I guess my question real quick was, I don't see, state management, is that a department within the county?
It's all, it's, that reminded me of Fort Grant. It is a department within the county. It's under the commissioner's fiscal asset department, but part of that group. But it's Fort Grant, and you're probably pretty much separate from it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I do have one question. I have I J and K, do we need to make those retroactive? No, we don't need to do that. Okay, thank you. So we're good. All right, thank you. Uh, may I have a motion on Bill number twenty dash twenty-five? Motion to approve. Motion to approve is made by Councilman Big, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Rotten?
Yes.
Mr. Tass? Mr. Talis?
Yes.
Mr. Tandray? Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Big?
Yes.
Mr. Shabaz?
Yes.
Mr. Big?
Yes.
President Cheswell?
Yes.
Pass with nine to zero. Well, the record show that Bill number twenty dash twenty-five was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number thirteen dash twenty-five? Bill number thirteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending and supplementing-
I'm putting your-
-eleven, this is an infirmary check for one seventeen San Jose County's food establishment of the San Jose County Code, this is San Jose County Department of Health. Miss Hesse, committee report, please. Petitioner?
Hello, so we're in the service directorate of San Jose County Department of Health, eight to nine four, um, this is a, a request to amend and supplement the code from when we updated some terms, collected some language, added some definitions, then align with state code and, uh, state area code and these five proportions so that they align with the actual procedures that have been going on.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the council for the petition? Seeing none, we will open the, uh, floor for public comment. Public hearing on Bill number thirteen dash twenty-five, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number thirteen dash twenty-five. Any further comments from councilmen? Seeing none, clerk, will you please read the roll? I'm sorry. Seeing none, may I have a motion? All right, we have a move, a move for approval by Councilwoman Hesse, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Tass?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tandray?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Big?
Yes.
Mr. Shabaz?
Yes.
Mr. Big?
Yes.
Mr. Rotten?
Yes.
President Cheswell?
Yes.
Bill passed with nine to zero.
Clerk, with, or I'm sorry, with the record show that Bill number thirteen dash twenty-five passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number sixteen dash twenty-five?
Bill number sixteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the San Jose County Council establishing rules and regulations for the general maintenance within the public right of way in San Jose County, Indiana, and adding a new chapter fifty-four to title public works to the San Jose County Code accordingly, with the petition of Brian Tanner.
Petitioner?
The petition of Bill number sixteen point five, considerable council with a faithful recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Shabaz, and I apologize for having drawn that. Mr. Big?
Thank you, President. Um, this, this ordinance, proposed ordinance comes before you, really is a collaborative effort between the county engineer, Stan Metters, and myself. Uh, you made a request, uh, some months ago about, uh, the need for ordinance like this, uh, that is, uh, out of ordinary for our county to not have an ordinance like this, uh, unlike our neighbor and municipal and county government. Uh, upon researching it, I discovered it was in fact right, um, that, uh, the county actually has, uh, and has until this date passed, uh, some liabilities associated with not having an ordinance like this. Uh, the overall spirit of the ordinance that's before us is to promote, uh, the clearing of sidewalks in case of noise and things of that nature. Uh, in the session with that, there are some additional provisions for general maintenance of the right of way, uh, in the sense adjacent to these properties or installing these properties in those cases. Uh, I will make note that there has been some, uh, questions and or remarks, and to receive the emails, uh, some comments as a response to quote from the article which covers the proposed ordinance following our committee meetings. Uh, and there are two, uh, proposed amendments that I would like to offer to the council as we consider it this evening if I may. Yes, Mr. Big. Um, one in the spirit of goodwill and, uh, the whole truth to the statement that I, I apparently believe, uh, the minister metters also made, um, uh, in our committee meetings, uh, that this wasn't intended to be punitive to inciting, who did not comply, um, the, the heart of it was to eliminate the response to those liabilities of the county to be this kind of clearing or to, uh, be at risk if there was anything injurious when the clearing did not happen. Uh, so to that end, and, uh, in the spirit of openness to the public, um, I offer that we remove, uh, section fifty-four dash oh five, uh, the section related to payment of fine and other remedies, uh, that, uh, again, um, there was never an intent for this to be a proactive punitive action, but in discussion with, uh, Councilman Rotten, uh, there is a concern over maybe the noisy neighbor or the not so friendly neighbor calling and reports, uh, of, of their neighbors aggressively and that not going over well, um, for good or for bad. Um, so again, that's something that could always be added in the future, if it exists, our future council will believe that it's necessary. Uh, but in the spirit of, uh, the guy's initial intent reaching out to me and, uh, my opinion, working with him and drafting and reviewing it, I'd like to propose that fifty-four dash oh five, if you move. Um, additionally, um, Mr. Rotten and I discussed earlier, uh, today about the clarification of, uh, what defines obstruction and what defines, uh, uh, maintenance within the right of way. Uh, so in that section of the ordinance, fifty-four dash oh two, Part B, uh, it previously read, upon the completion of public right of way improvement, the owner or occupant of the abiding property shall keep in repair all private approaches for driveways as well as sidewalk treat lines incurred. To match the prior subsection, uh, I propose that it's needed, it's needed to read, upon the completion of public right of way improvement, the owner or occupant of the abiding property shall keep in repair, and if three of obstructions interfering with the highway, vehicular or pedestrian traffic thereon, all private approaches for driveways as well as sidewalk treat lines incurred. Um, that particular language came up by way of an example that Mr. Metters, uh, shared with me as we were discussing this ordinance recently. Um, I think it's, it, we could all say that it's a shared unfortunate circumstance that a lot of damage occurred with the storm, uh, over the last week and a half. Uh, but one of the consequences of that is, uh, a lot of people have to turn, um, place things, brush, trees, logs, et cetera, within the public right of way. Um, it, it, again, is an unfortunate circumstance, the damage that occurred, uh, but that is actually a safety risk, uh, to have that right adjacent to the roadway and as an example of an obstruction interfering with the highway, um, and a potential risk for, uh, the county as well as, uh, the adjacent property owners if there were to be an accident related to that, uh, because I don't believe the county has the planning resources, uh, or staff, uh, to collect that brush. Uh, it's not part and parcel of the county's responsibility to deal with a storm. Um, so those are the two amendments that I think are conducive to the theme of, uh, more clear and a more favorable, um, and, uh, goodwill ordinance proposed tonight. I hope there's any questions. Any questions from council for the petition?
Mr. Tandray? Mr. Tanner, are you re-reading the amendment for fifty-four to the, it comes and asks the word repair, right?
Well, it's, well, it's, and I am happy if it is passed with an amendment later, if the motion to amend is successful, to share that in writing. Uh, but the wording, well, it's, upon the completion of public right of way improvement, the owner or occupant of the abiding property shall keep in repair, and if three of obstructions interfering with the highways, vehiculares, or pedestrian traffic hereon, all private approaches or driveways as well as sidewalk treat lines incurred.
Only question I have is, uh, prior to the word repair, do you insert the word debris fair or in a state of debris fair or is that not a fair?
Repair, uh, in general refers to usable. Um, I think if you were to say, and the repair, if somebody has a crap in the driveway, uh, it starts to become an issue, and I don't think we want to, uh, have issues like that or, or puddle, uh, because we love the front of the driveway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tandray. Any other questions from council?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Uh, Mr. Tanner, um, I heard from several people in my district that were not, um, in support of the measure you're bringing forward tonight. Um, in particular, um, hurting people who are older or, um, on, uh, fixed incomes, the cost that they're going to incur because of this. I wanted to read a short excerpt from the president from the Villas at Sandalwood. Um, he said, with this ordinance in, um, excuse me, with this ordinance in effect, the HOA would either have to contract with our landscaper to include sidewalks, which would undoubtedly cause an increase in HOA fees to pay for it, or residents would have to clear their own sidewalks or hire someone else to do it. I would venture to say that most of our residents would not be able to do it themselves. In addition, the majority of owners are on fixed income, and any additional cost to comply with the ordinance could be a hardship. Um, so their whole HOA board is against this, and, and I understand their concerns. What do you have to say about that?
The concerns are there, and I sympathize with anybody who is, has mobility, age, or financial related restrictions to their ability to comply with this. Um, it's, it's not something that everybody can do, and I'm, I'm grateful for my own ability to do so. Um, I, I, I cleared the entire sidewalks for the block and the driveways in my vision. That may not be a viable option for people who have homes that are more than forty feet apart like in mine is really. That may not be viable for people in, uh, what is, uh, maybe not age restricted, but traditionally, uh, older demographic within, uh, a duplex or HOA environment of where everybody has some mobility, age, or, uh, other restriction that would prevent them from complying, uh, with this. However, that is exactly why, um, the last section, uh, fifty-four oh five, uh, is eliminated uh, so that there is no punitive penalty, uh, associated with not complying. Uh, it does mean that the ordinance is still in effect to relieve the county of that responsibility and to relieve the county of that liability, but there is no actionable binding or penalty for those who do not comply. Um, if anything, I think it's a call to action for us to be an engaging, friendly community that takes care of our seniors to the full extent that we can. Um, and that was the spirit in which that section ended.
Any other questions for the petition? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number sixteen dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please come forward, sign in, and state your name and address for the record. Is your phone in, Ted, was that? Not there? Okay, just state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name, excuse me, my name is Richard Sal. Um, and I live in a villa in San Jose. I'm not your representative to board and representing myself. Um, we, no one in our villa claims the sidewalk because that's where the county's power sits at. And, and if, if I claim my sidewalk, there's no law that's fine, just a non-legal thing. Um, and people don't, people don't walk on the sidewalk in our neighborhood. They walk on the, it, 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 that kind of lady, like. And, uh, we don't have a treat line, so that's again why the, you know, we just put on the sidewalk by the sidewalk. It's, it's, you know, breaks the tradition. And I don't want to, uh, live in violation of county laws, even if it's something important.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room who would like to state, speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? All right, seeing no one, is there any, are there any further comments by council members? Rotten?
Yeah. Uh, I would like to say thank you to, Mr. Tanner, for, uh, being accommodating to make some of the changes to this, uh, proposed ordinance. Um, you know, when you look inside city limits, sidewalks are quite common, and they're probably used daily. People use them to get to work, to go to the store, but once you start getting out of the unincorporated county, sidewalks aren't very common. Many neighborhoods don't have any of them, but some of the newer ones do have sidewalks. These sidewalks don't go anywhere, and they're just within the neighborhood and tend to be used more for recreation. So when you have that weather, people aren't going to be outside, uh, you know, for leisurely walk. So that's part of the reason why maybe this hasn't been in place up till now, but I think that, um, there is advantage to, uh, encouraging people to get out and be active throughout the winter. And I appreciate that removing the fine makes this just more of a, a reminder, a suggestion to, you know, to clean out the, the sidewalks when there's, uh, been snow or, uh, rainfall. So, you know, not, not being a real fan of any regulation, I, I think this one's fairly mild and, um, you know, in the future, it, it could be increased, it could be eliminated. I, I think the comment of, uh, you know, homeowners association, those, they tend to function, um, in the vacuum of where there isn't a county ordinance that applies. And I think the county should respect homeowners associations, the, the rules they set up for their neighborhood. So I think, you know, if there is changes in the future, I think, um, removing the impact of what homeowners association wish for each one of their neighborhoods, I think is the important criteria. But for now, not having any fines, I think this is, um, you know, just a, just a recommendation for the community as a whole.
So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rotten.
Mr. Fitts, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to vote against this tonight because my district is rural. And I did talk with some people down in the Lakeville area and, uh, nobody wanted to do that. I do have one precinct city, South Bend, they're covered by their ordinance. Southern precinct, eight precincts, city of Lakeville, but I can think of the government already. And I, I understand, I appreciate the amendments. I thought about voting for it, but I, I can't vote for it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitts.
Mr. Tanner, I'm going to ask Mr. Metters, I have a question for our council committee.
Mr. Metters, Department of Defense, Department of Transit, Department of Road Office, bill number seventy-four.
Mr. Metters, any example that was given to us earlier, um, the building panel would refer to his sign, walking meetings and next to the roadway. Would it be any imposition on your crews? Would it have to change their process with filing, um, if it had been snowfall occurred? If in fact, what you described, so definitely, if he filed and the snow ends up on the sidewalk because they're, if their sidewalks above the road with no treat line, you give him kind of a response to that or?
I don't know where we would, no, I don't know where it goes and, um, if you're asking if we could go out between the sidewalks, we could not have that.
No, I don't have that.
Well, I, I guess with the cloud, I don't know where we'd be. If it didn't go there, I don't know where it would have given. We had the same issue in, in Cul-de-sac. That's why we don't, they take the long, that's why we go back out, try and evenly distribute the, the hall of revenue around the Cul-de-sac because you know where, uh, to really split it. So I, I could talk to our clouds, uh, our superintendent, but I, I don't, I don't think there would be any way to do that. Unless we actively remove the snow from, while we were doing it with a loader and some trucking, I think.
To talk further?
Yes, sir.
I, I appreciate the effort, Mr. Tanner. I, I think it's important. I think in the, in terms of public safety, you get people off of walking and interroding subdivisions and having them walk on the sidewalk for the, when they do have sidewalk. If they're available and it's a much safer track for people that did, sort of like, you know. If you got a sidewalk, then I believe you'd have, that's, that's for us, for me. I know that they cover a lot of our rural areas and it's with our flat areas, you know, rural areas. You don't have sidewalk, but I appreciate your effort, Mr. Tanner, and we'll be going tonight.
Thank you. Any further comments, any other compliments? Hearing none. May I have a motion? But I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with amendment, as noted in presentation to eliminate section fifty-four dash, uh, fifty-four point oh five as well as additional language in fifty-four point oh two, subsection B. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Tanner, um, to pass the ordinance with, with the, uh, removal of section fifty-four point oh five and the changing in language in fifty-four point oh two B. We have a second by Ms. Shaba. Clark, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Tanner, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fitts?
No.
Mr. Chivaz?
Yes.
Mr. Strick?
No.
Mr. Rotten?
Yeah, I'm going to go, yes.
Mr. Tabb? President Tappel?
Yes.
We vote the record shows bill number sixteen dash twenty-five passes for the vote of six to three. Court, will you please read bill number fifteen dash twenty-five, please?
The North Amendment and supplement title fifteen lands, you should step to one fifty-four signing and zoning from the same as the town's code as amendment for the property located in under the sixty-nine point three six plus minus enter parcel after north east of intersection of Blues Road and US twenty from A agricultural district, D U V planned development district, fishnet, hedge cross, downhill.
Mr. Tanner, may I report this? Um, Mr. Tappel, bill number fifteen dash twenty-five, Council of Council, council of the neighborhood, please. Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Fishnet?
Thank you, Sean Klein, very pleased that it's on the eleventh floor of this building. Uh, this petition can be known on the highway parcel on the screen at northeast corner of street in US twenty from A agricultural district, D U V planned development district. The D U V, um, petition in this case would allow for a mix of housing sites that have arrived at the density as well as commercial and office uses and outdoor recreational uses. As I mentioned, the property is currently zoned in A agricultural, uh, most recently, uh, serving as a filled barn field. It is bisected from east to left by the Keller Beach that runs through. And additionally by the Keller Beach, uh, there is P and R approximate floodway and the approximate flood fringe. Uh, the D U V question is, uh, proposing to retain that as, uh, open recreational space, uh, respecting the, um, what hazard areas in that case. The north are large parcels from A agricultural district. To the east are till fields as well as municipal homes, those A agricultural districts. To the south, there's small, large residential uses of A agricultural districts. Below those, you'll find large fields that are Z O A agricultural district. And then below that is, uh, Cleveland Cliff, which is Z O G I general industrial within the county. And that's where you really start to get into the heart of the I E C core development area, another portion that's already been built out. And then when you go to the west, there are Z O fields and municipal homes, uh, all of which are Z O A agricultural. This is southern property of the current year. And that's the view of the Keller Beach. And then that's, um, U H fruit, the west. And then there's the jeep from the bicycle. And then these are the parcels that we use in the south of US twenty, which have residential uses, some A agricultural. Uh, I'll let the fishnet speak more to you with the, the proposed site plan. Uh, what I will mention is in terms of the, uh, various, um, the various new districts, we are proposing the more commercial uses along US twenty to the south as well as the more, um, the higher density residential uses. Then get up towards the north of the property with lower density, uh, more single family. The, uh, site plan is showing, um, one entrance from US twenty and, uh, four from Spruce currently. These entrances will be subject to, uh, in-house approval when it comes to US twenty and county engineer approval when it comes to the Spruce entrances. Uh, the county engineer, uh, has stated that the fishnet will have to, uh, perform a traffic study to, uh, gauge what this increase in these in the area will need infrastructure that's needed in the road to make sure that, um, the initial traffic is a concept. These site would be certified, these are live water and this is the south end, these are sewers. Those utilities would be necessary for these to be proposed. This kind of shows the, um, areas of the difference opposed to these districts, so let the fishnet have some more. This does come here from the area of plantation with a favorable recognition, six to one. The, um, majority did find that this area is appropriate for, um, new residential uses, which will be necessary to confirm the I E C core development area as it develops. And furthermore, it's appropriate to allow commercial and office uses to support the residential. There, during the public hearing, uh, three members of the public, both in favor and two both in remonstrance. Generally, I would say there were mixed feelings on both sides. I believe that for the most part it was recognized that, if you have it, will be hit, um, in the area around the I E C core development area. However, there were some concerns that some of the proposed commercial uses, um, might be too intense for the area. Beyond that, I am happy to answer questions.
Any questions from council, please, Mr. Tanner? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Maybe I should ask Mr. Suter and the petitioner more on intent, the word intent to use. I, I know it's easy being a started up. I don't want to pin you down, but, um, towards twenty, I know it's more commercial, correct? And then what do you, what do you have, what's your vision there on this, on the, uh, towards, uh, towards the highway? Commercial, do you have anything or? Why, Mr. Suter could be, so, yeah. Sorry, I, maybe you want somebody else to show any other questions before I go with Mr. Suter? Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, what was that? Uh, anybody want, before I go with Mr. Suter, you want, anybody want to show any other questions? Well, why don't you, Mr. Thomas wanted to go ahead. Okay. Um, thank you. Um, but again, I, I leave. For on a jump twenty, I know you have to get approved from the state and so forth. And then the intent, the word intent to use is commercial and so forth. I know it's hard to, I'm trying to pin you down here, but, yeah. Can you run that and, and, and what do you, what do you think your plans for that? I know it's long-term and big change.
Yeah. Um, so as I said, my name is David Suter. I'm returning to office, office forty-one oh one, that's my fire waiting floor, that's five four four. Just by the numbers, I can't tell. Thank you. We can come from time to time, we, we are, you know, I think what the Saturday first business is light, light ones, right? So we'll be at all, so we'll be at, maybe active pairs. We really don't know. One of the things, as, as my presentations are out, is that we're looking five to ten years and we don't know what's going to happen in this area. We know that there's already studies like the, as well as how that's interconnected with twenty. This is a five-year build out and it's probably in excess of a hundred million dollars of investment over that fifth time. So we don't really know exactly. That's why we're using the D U V as a house. Uh, because we, we do know that we heavily focus on housing, about five hundred housing units, maybe fifty single-family dwellings and other, we've got apartments. In terms of the, the, uh, the square density up there, uh, we would expect that to be flat space with the apartments above that and maybe everything from, you know, retail stores or, uh, what we term it as suburban building. It's very similar design to the Heritage Square project that you see at the Ranger stuff, where there's a focus on commercial, hard to focus more on the, on the housing and less on the purchase. But we'll be trying to address this and, and along that square, for instance, for that public square, which is actually to the, to the south of Taylor Ditch. And these are those kind of side ways. But those would be for, you know, for facility for, I think, could be offices, could be at big stores, could be coffee shops around that public square with, with apartments above. And then along, uh, US twenty, we would see an additional light, light work to do. Could be everything from, I think we don't know. You know, it depends on, on what we can attract out there in that area, but it's not going to be heavy. I, I noticed in the questions, I was asked that, some of lodging and gas station. That's certainly not the intent here. That, that's not the slide in this development. Uh, as you probably know, that development is going to be better on, on stable two down by Salisbury and those.
And that's, yeah, that's a concern, I think, that folks out there have.
Yes.
Uh, this, this would be like two, you know, and I, and I'm trying to ensure that it's not, and you can answer to that.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, we look at, at stable two, the seventy-dollar byway, and, and as, as people may know, that you develop western area around winter day and other areas, subdivision in the county, which works elsewhere. We live at stable two after five years back, over a year ago. They want to see that more, more so a heavy rental hotel lodging, fuel center, et cetera. There's a great gate to the hours on site and fifty corners of the GM site and part of the energy. We had that possession of the, the one developed. This is more the housing suburban, which is density use. And under both the thirty-seven county plan, county plan, ending with carile plan, uh, this is meant, meant for weak, weak density. And so that's why we have so many housing units. That's why we have interconnected trade-offs. But in order to support that housing, we have, we want to see people on site, some extent. Child care, we have large projects, we believe, uh, again, we have over five hundred units. This is being driven as, as a natural consequence and a desirable consequence of the fact that we have almost twenty billion dollars of investment development happening in town. And we now, we recently figured out how to study by the town, we already say that we have a team of the stories. This is the first step. If we can bring over five of them home, we think that's a great move. Or two miles east of New Cut Al aisle. I would point also that New Cut Al aisle, uh, zoning ordinance allows for lodging and, and stewardage, and, and gas station, and more of the business. So they're not the first to be gas station or lodging, and it may be more focusing than a carile of this to us. But we can't tie these five, eight, ten years off now. If it doesn't affect people we want, whether it's, that's no doubt this, but that's clearly not their intent, certainly not to be tied. We're not talking about putting hotels there, as I thought about putting gas stations there. So, you know, we can't promise anybody that, whether it's D U V. But when we look at, and I'm, it doesn't make sense if it was a gas station here that falls down in, in, in Salisbury, which has all the truck factories and all the new plants and everything else happens. Same thing with hotels, the lodging down there. We have a mission plan for housing down there, and that's talking to staff over a year ago and, and from there. They suggest they want to keep housing north and invest all of the commercial south on stable two. That's what we've done. That's what we made of the plan, that was D U V, that's taken years for a long time. I probably would be tired by this. So, you know, at that point, we don't know what's, that's going to happen out here. That's why we're doing D U V. That's why, uh, D U V are very effective at helping to design and build over, you know, the years. But it's meant to be a big entity, suburban building. And, you know, we, we just like, we like to come to committee meetings and committee meetings, we just traffic, we just, doing water, we just, things to fire. Uh, I, I think of course we have to answer a few more questions, but, you know, I'd like to lay concerns of anybody that's in carile that. There are ordinance allows for lodging hotels and it also offers gas stations, but that's certainly not our account here. We, we want this to be big density suburban building, I mean, just mixture of, that's the square of a, hopefully for more than housing. That very square housing is off the streets and a lot of commercial. This is one, one unit, and that's why everything, north of Taylor Ditch is, is under themselves and west of the south of Taylor Ditch is off of their themselves. But we need some of that commercial in order to support the land value to make it accessible, uh, or, or, uh, not to be, excuse me, but affordable for people that want to buy, you know, every lot. Like, I hope that doesn't depress.
It does, and I, I appreciate you talking about that, lodging, the gas station, that is a big concern. I know you have other plans, you know, I do like, obviously, the developers, the Matthews, local folks. I really do like that versus someone else from, you know, California, but I, and that's, the local involvement, I think, is really important. They know, I know the community and, uh, was, and I said, oh, thank you.
Local developers, local banks, couple lawyers, and everybody was, and, and that's, you know, we live here. I live in county and, uh, and so we live here and, uh, I live in, I live in, uh, really well thought out and, uh, and it's just a nice city. The people who prefer the class, yeah, anybody who's, they, they, uh, they try to. And it's just a nice city, the people who prefer the class, and anybody who's, they, they tried to set seven times, which they opened on, that's meant to be, they're all on edge, you know, that is pretty, they're all over. They build, I mean, all the today, the audit, all the bill, that technology, all my design, it's all managed by, but, um. I, I won't want to put in my presentation, I know it was a long presentation, but that just maybe, we didn't receive favorable staff recognition, very fantastic recognition, and the maintenance committee, which is what we call the, uh, what comes to this night, you know, have there been a question?
Mr. Thomas. It actually goes to both Sean for clarification from the staff report, but also Mr. Suter, I think you'll give sense of something that you would want to respond to, I think, as a way of the question. Sean, I'm looking at the conference plan, and Mr. Suter is, you know, used to that, used to mix terminology, between medium density, mixed density, mixed. Those aren't purely interchangeable, although they can sometimes be displaced with each other. Our conference of plan dictates that this is identified from medium density residential, not mixed use, not mixed density, medium density residential. And in fact, rough measurement, the mixed use area in the conference of plan is actually a little over a mile to the west of where this project site is identified. What is the staff's response to the lack of compliance with what's been identified in the conference of plan? And your opinion as a professional in relation to my question?
In my personal opinion, I don't believe that some amount of neighborhood is commercial and office, that onsite that supports that, um, is the best residential. I, that'd be a hazard, be the area.
Mr. Suter, I didn't know if you had anything further. Well, I probably tell you for the, for the metaphor here, but, but when we talk about mixed density, we talk about housing, you know, but, but we're also a bit cheap, because of, we still have that, but, but I do kind of mix those two together. But, you know, again, we want to be able to support the trails, with amenities that people that live there, private homes, a lot of homes by way, private letting, a lot of homes to travel with. Not enough, you know, with first, and, and, and see the question, well, if we go on a mile, part of the west, no land available there. So we have to buy land that was available, where you're willing to sell it, and then the public can available, and again, on a new section that we're working on, we're studying with Collins, and so. We, we went for the project devising, last fall, we brought the other regions of the county, so, and then we had, uh, supplies, we had more people to pay those, that we have, we have, so, 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 so. So I apologize for the, for the, but it's essentially a mixed density, but it's a law with mixed use projects, because that we want to, like, to support that, it's done.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Suter, I have one more question, more of a clarification on how, how do you phrase or identify this project? You, you compared it to, pardon me, I missed your call, you compared this to Heritage Square, kind of part, any type of development that's been proposed. My question to you is, how does this actually compare to that when Heritage Square, or kind of part, regardless of which one that we look to, was already developed around? And is, was, is currently actively being built out as an inbuilt project within the surrounding development, whereas this is an extension of, I think, when you refer to the leapfrogging, uh, the past, well, not my words, I'm, I'm relaying something from our committee meeting. Whereas this appears to be leapfrogging a few miles, so, maybe other similar development patterns.
Well, a couple of weeks, I would actually bother the, 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 Heritage Square, you know, it's still involved in that, 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 when Heritage Square started, the three restaurants, there wasn't much else there, right? So that, it actually has been a leapfrogging too, but we're putting a restaurant, modern development out there, hotels, but with, all of that's a leapfrogging, you know? When I'm talking about Heritage Square, we're talking about inside, where the idea is to go inside, and you have a square, and you have buildings around it, it's not in that way to, to, with the landscape. I'm talking about design, but more focused on housing, that Heritage Square, you know, has been up there, is the first part of that, is including the market, and everything else, it's much more commercial. We have a lot, much less commercial there, much more housing, but we do want, makes sense in the design, in the, that high end of, of operations. In terms of leapfrogging, this issue came up a couple of times, once the very plan, and I, I don't think it came up with a management in the mouth, but the idea was leapfrogging, well, you can't develop without leapfrogging when you're looking at a Collins project right there. Because you have to go from border of South Bend or the borders of, of the car lot, you start going out and finding people in that way. We have to buy available land, we're not going to force people to sell, we're not going to, we're not going to, so we need to find a big parcel, a big deal parcel, in order to, we didn't want to buy ten acres, we both buy homes down there, there's twenty homes. We want to make a statement that says all the development, the commercial and industrial development in the county, we want to make a statement that we're bringing, I think, with three thousand units short of here, I think, in the sense of, we're bringing, trying to bring five hundred, right? There's still a lot of land to be built up there, but maybe nobody else will build up there. So we put this on the corner as well, not in the, you know, so we have, have road access, we have here twenty access to the new highway, uh, so it's always also, we're not there by, by the county, in terms of, whether it's to the proof around there. So, you know, if there's leapfrogging, I think any project out there, certainly first project out there, we consider leapfrogging, because if there's first doesn't want, first, the north of it, there's a solar park, you know, I don't even think I've checked this thing, I think you said it's north of it, right? And, and, but that's a solar park. And so, you know, we're, we're fighting up for that, we think this is a good use for that, I mean, our, our people define it as, it's a tough business, a lot, not, not a half mile, not, you know, but, you know, so, this is a good place to build, this is the project. There wasn't other land available that would eliminate the big part, and I, I'm just saying, the big family department, they still already have a, a developed quarter, and, and, like, you have all the residential, we put a commercial on it, and all the residential, that's not what you have, you have a political land, in most parts. And so putting in, now, the residential, so I hope that is a question.
And I appreciate the, the fair indication, uh, an aesthetic that's similar to the example that you made versus the pattern and where the development is taking place. I, I did have one final question, and it was relative to, uh, Mr. Hudson's statement at our committee meeting, which is that substantial improvements in investment need to be made to expand some water treatment and distribution operations to serve this site. Because this site is away from other developments, and because other developments may fill in that space. A, has there been a discussion to buy the developer, the investment group, uh, to facilitate the cost of that distribution and, um, upsetting the water treatment plant facility? Uh, or upsetting the distribution itself, knowing that, uh, there's got to be some concession later on with other developments in that, in the car lot and this development? Or do we just build a second water main later because there's more to play there?
Well, if you recall, that one of the questions that, ready by the car lot, of whether or not we would accept points water at our facility, and we would be the ones to pay for it, we agree to that. So there's not additional costs for the county to sell out, they're just providing water.
...that provide that if you're certain it's large users, you wouldn't qualify. Certain large users don't pay us on back the money because they're funding costs. So they anticipate people coming and joining in and developing sewer water. We're looking at the water via property. Another perfect scenario, right, out in the eastern part of town, you have a district that has to develop, get to bring its own water and its own sewer outlet, sewage, sewage system in case of that. Saying here water runs right by us if we want. These developments, you know, sewer and water, you have the problem. And city itself stands to provide sewer, but on our property, they're funded by the way. And water runs right by us as well. What we did agree with these towns, however, is that the idea that they didn't have to service private at home. They could bring water to the point to the development and development, you know, the same. The city that water out over that city night. So I, I hope that is quite the way, so thank you.
Good question, thank you. One more question, that's Mr. Tanner. Um, with the previous order, do you think there are any to a path sidewalk, um, public right of way? I, I wonder what, I see there's sidewalk. Yes, any problem with complying with that provision of that, wasn't?
We're not, we're gonna have, um, we don't call them, uh, public. We have lanes behind the points, behind the home, that's what we call, we call the lanes now. Or track, they've got to save that nature. Uh, no, we'll have a homeless population, we have the responsible, the developer, the responsible for the, for the commercial. You know, business, so they can tell that we're just, we're not gonna have any problems with that. Um, nine, nine, nine times as far as we internal anyway. Um, so we're, we want every issue to find that, to accommodate.
Any concerns with making a significant investment like this, abiding their near solar farms?
No.
Or revaluing the property or devaluing the investment?
It's, uh... No, the short answer is no. We knew it was there, we bought the land. We knew we had to work for that. That was already proved, developed. Uh, we came to, and we were from, we came to nuisance, right? So we didn't have any issues with that. We knew that, we developed that, we were focused on landscape, that, um, I know it, I know it borders. Um, we're not even going to go to the north, you know, I don't, I don't understand. If you go east or west, if you go, hang a west, that's where the two roads. We said go east if somebody, we thought that probably that was stuff. But, um, we don't, we don't have a problem with solar farms. We're there and, and the mechanism, but we'll figure a way to deal with that in terms of landscaping and environmental issues.
With the four inches of the long Bruce Road, is it all of his intention to improve Bruce Road to the link? Millennial put to the property? Or what county are you doing that as a?
We're gonna work our company on a traffic study, do what we've done there. I mean, there, there are, I, I know there are a lot of studies, it's in this, I understand these two roads. Because it could be a base, make, make the connection to the issue at some point. Uh, we don't know, but by the time this is developed, we're getting, keeping in mind that it's a five finger development. Um, so, you know, all the time, if, if, if we would need to update, I'm, I'm sure they'll fund us. But, uh, we'll, we'll deal with that through the, through the traffic study with the, with the community. We have a little bit of doubt, we have a little bit of government help in that. So we'll work with all our clients, partners, we always do. And, um, so we have some water on site, but that's not an issue. Um, and we don't have to discuss it, I, I mean, this, this isn't exciting, right?
We all feel that those uses are much more appropriate on State 02 than they are on the local one. So if we have an operator or a buyer, we certainly put them in that direction first.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you, Mr. Rupp. Yes, thank you. So responding to some of the comments that were presented tonight, concerned about vehicle speeds, and I know you've mentioned, you've been very clear of the need for a traffic study. So if a traffic study comes back and says, you know, you need turn lanes to get onto, on the highway there, is there a take to put those in? Absolutely, yes, sir. Okay. And my, my second question would be, so, you know, including commercial with a residential, I know it's been brought up a number of times. So with this being safe for me and Vincy residential, I mean, even Vincy residential, you know, it's more than just your, your half acre residential lot, right? So it is an increase in intensity over what, you know, the houses across the street could have. But, you know, residential tends to be where people want to private be. Okay. Where commercial, you want attention, right? So a gas station has tons of lights on, okay? Trying to get people to pull over, even a, even a office, retail office, you know, they have lights on, they're trying to get attention. So my, my thought is, you know, hotel at this location, I mean, that's medium density. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's never paid. Seems like hotels would be okay, car wash. I don't know why there would need to be a car wash there, you know, it's a really big neighborhood. But, you know, a gas station, I mean, I, I think that's something where it's a pretty good chance you probably want to put in a gas station and maybe a car wash. So what are your thoughts on merging a commercial use like a gas station, which you might want to put on the road where if you're across the street from the same house, what are your thoughts on merging commercial use with residential in application?
Mr. Matthews. Yeah, Mr. Matthews, so a gas station here was interfered with the whole effort, the whole plan, you know? Gas stations, they have a lot of space, they have a lot of different gas patterns, they're open late at night. They're not really, because you look at what gas stations are for, they're not usually put near residential property, they're put on, on main roads, that's why we picked State 02. That's why as part of that State 02 commercial, I mean, from the edge of the commercial there, the whole purpose of that, one of the main purposes of that was that's where a gas station is built. Because again, it's that new change, there's a lot of people that are going to be from New York and Amazon, et cetera. It, it doesn't fit well. We wouldn't put, we wouldn't put a gas station that connects to Notre Dame. It doesn't make sense, you want them on, on interstates, you want them on high, high census holders with a lot of access. They got a lot of land and the traffic patterns, they go late at night, open in the morning. It's just something that's just what they desire, right? So it's just never been easy. I can tell you that internally we don't discuss that, but, but again, at the P and D, whatever category came in, came in. And, and so, and with that, it's this, we're pushing everybody, we're not hotel developers. We represent hotel developers, my friend does. We are not hotel developers. If there's a hotel developer, we would be having an interstate, we want to take four acres, put in five of a hotel there, it doesn't make any sense, right? It's not a demand set. There may be a demand at State 02 because of high level traffic. There's already plenty of gas stations along State 02. I don't see that gas station as our, I, I don't understand what the issue is here. Again, you have the fact that New Carile seems to have some widely with objectives, but it's just not in our plans. Unless you have a white commercial, you know, you're spending a lot of money here to green space and save square and everything, why would we, why would we mess it up with a gas station over that? Doesn't make any sense.
So are you saying that you're not planning to have a gas station in that site?
We're not planning on it. We're saying we're not, we're not planning on hotels or gas stations by those things, though, is that it's a ten year build up. And in ten years, if people don't want to live there for whatever reason.
Yeah.
You know, and we don't even have clothes. And, and they're saying he tries to make, you know, an interchange at, at Blue Road. Well, maybe that's, make them put gas stations up in the corner next to the solar, solar town. But it's not in any of our plans, it, it never has been. We've always, and you talked about almost two years ago now, I was always believing the gas station or hotel at State 02, these things for residential, like we're supposed to. And that was our plan. So, but we, we also want to be candid, honest with the, with the people at the P and D and say, hey, these are things you need to offer. And we need to put a petition on the P and D, and that's what, that's the only thing that gets out there. But, but kind of, if, if I felt that, you know, I, I don't know how they even would answer honesty for that. True or false?
Okay, thank you. Uh, no, no, it's a good time.
Maybe, Mr. Tanner. I'm just going to be very quiet. And broadly in support of the residential investment, well, other than the dance, but I'll crash this in. Will you confirm that I heard what I thought I heard from Mr. Rupp and others' questions? You would prefer, push, advocate for the development of that gas hotel and other type of commercial development to the side of State 02? But it pushed me to shove the all my dollar win, saying it's down the line, this isn't developed. I'd reconsider it. Or if the developer says no, this is our, or the, rather the operator says no, this is our spot. You can't convince the other wife, I want to go here, that again, the all my, all my dollar, dollar win, and you wouldn't turn out, turn down the deal with two of these uses, right? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah. Just kind of very comfortable in confirming or stating that, yeah, we want to put those types of uses to State 02. Sounds like the, the, there's still a requirement throughout the council for certain types of places. Maybe this is on topic, but still in the council, that is the, the question regarding whether it's in the community or if you want to try and do that. Or resigning, approving, if they like it. Now, I apologize if I went in there with a big mistake, but that's my intention there.
Mr. Tanner. Well, I want Sean to confirm what Mr. Matthews said, if that's correct. Is there another process? If we, if we rezone this tonight, P and D, is there another process?
I guess it depends specifically on what approval is. If the, the rezoning is approved tonight, they will have to go through a secondary approval process. However, that's going to be gradually established. During that time, they can kind of finalize the site plans, they can add additional. But in terms of getting approval for the uses that are outlined, submitted to you, those uses could come in without you there.
Thank you. Go ahead, I get my question back to Mr. Matthews. And we've got a car wash, New Carile, for the West, we've got a gas station that's plenty pointing to the P and D. My guess is you're probably not able to replicate those types of uses on that property. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay. Mr. Rupp. Um, just, you know, I just, the town is going through some rezoning right now. They're not going to allow it, it'd sound like, gas stations or hotels. So I'm just deferring there. And so, and they're, that's, that's what they want, that's known, that the town is not, they're, they're going to rezone the town and not allow, basically. I mean, am I, is it that simple or no?
Not quite, but undergoing a complete zoning as it should. So I just wanted to say that it's hard, and I didn't want that to be the case.
Okay. So just so, I'm just, to clarify with Mr. Suter and Mr. Matthews, that, that could be known.
I think, I mean, if, if they don't, you know, they could say that we don't put a hotel there, then I could put a hotel there. I, I'm not sure exactly, but the town is, I mean, again, that's a family of, we're in the county, you know, we're two miles east of New Carile, we think about the county here. Again, we've already, I might develop the, the four acres on State 02 and hotels and the gas, that's our, that's our plan to go. But again, I mean, if the gas station is a complete, there's a, there's a, what we're looking at here. But this down point, if, 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 if eight, nine years, and, and there's still a seven, sixty-nine acres, still five acres, developing, want to put a hotel back there, there's a, now there's seven thousand cars they go on two roads. We'd like to be able to do that, but, but again, it's not a game of games, it hasn't been, it was a five, three, or eight, or an issue. But we did want to address it by our front, that was not any part of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Suter. Any further comments by any of the council members?
Mr. Rupp? Yes, thank you. So I, I just wonder, it, it sounds like we're all, at least partially in agreement, if, if it makes sense to include a, a written commitment that there won't be gas stations or car washes on site? And a hotel, maybe just not on Highway 2, or I don't, if it, if it's off Highway 2, if it's kind of in the middle area somewhere? I, I don't know if that's starting to get complicated, but it sounds like, you know, with the gas stations and car washes, that that wouldn't be an issue right now.
No, it, it gets complicated, I mean, if, if the county's going to approve more touring, then no gas station, you want to build a thing, they'll come west of certain road. And I, I'm just not sure, again, we're looking at doing it on commercial property, but not here. But, but I'm looking at terms that, New Carile saying, hey, we don't want any lodging or gas stations out there. Even if it wasn't part of our plan, I, I just had a, I had a, an issue with the idea that why is the county worried about having a gas station lodging if, if, if the demand is there? Whether it's law property, the property, what happens if property, what if it decides to go? And they want to put a gas station there? If, in fact, I'm saying that you don't need, you can't put a gas station anywhere in the county? You can't put a gas station lodging anywhere in the county? I, I don't know where that, I don't know where that's been pulled in, and they start deciding what usage you can and cannot have in the county, if the county in New Carile doesn't want them there.
I think, I think that's a fair statement. You know, if I'm still on the council and the property next door would be retail, I, I might say the same thing. Hey, your, your home has been there for many years, looking out on a quiet, you know, open space or farm field, and now things have, have changed a little bit. So even with make sense, it's going to change quite a bit for people across the street, too. I do know, nobody has shown up in this meeting for, you know, living across the street there. I'm just, you know, I'm just, you know, there's gas stations, they, they get so bright. So I'm just wondering if, if we're already in agreement on that. And then in the future, if, if there is a need, if there, then, you know, that, that could be brought back to the council to lift that restriction in the future, if there's a need, and it could be that people across the street aren't concerned about that then either.
I'm just, I'm just, we're just concerned how that would work. If, if the county's saying no gas stations along the county, you know, in all hotels, or if it's just property, then that, that'll be done just.
I, you know, I'm just suggesting an idea here myself, so I guess, you know, I would just defer to, to other members on the council if they have any thoughts to add to that.
Mr. Tanner, do it. I think in the spirit of what Mr. Rupp is asking, you're, you're not proposing a gas station in an area that's already done for a gas station, or, or you're not proposing a gas station at all, to be quite frank. But there's the allowable use for some of these facilities that are contained within the T and D that would not come before any other legislative body to approve, if they're decided to be pursued in the future, if you approve this tonight. In an area that in New Carile's comprehensive plan is contrary to what their wishes are, in our county's comprehensive plan is contrary to what the community, particularly in that process, will identify this one for, then that's why there's the pushback, that's why there's the question. It's not a, are we going to do something as, it seems of, as regulating no more gas stations in the western part of the county? This, this is directly in conflict with the types of uses that were identified in comprehensive plans, or in competition with New Carile's comprehensive plan, and the established use of this that you're asking the community to own for. That, that's the basis of these questions. And I think that's why the questions are justified.
Any further comments from council members? Just, just as a point of reference, the homes on, you were telling us that are being referenced across the street, directly above, up to the land that we rezoned last year, for at least offshore railroads, interrails, so there's, there's an industrial rezoning behind those homes. So there's, there's been a lot more on that little bit of area. That's, that's to the south of the homes, but you're, when it's, when it's true, not mainly necessary, wants to develop in those streets. But, you know, New Carile is really unique, opportunity storefront, but I've been a lot of my face nights, a lot of I drive, like Mr. Suter said, I drive from the city of South Bend. I love to go to Rogers, Autera, and, and you ever go past Peter Conners, now called the construction of the town? Michael Cameron now done the long shot with the regular dining, and West Side Town, the Black Path, you know? I don't know, even if this P and D developed newer restaurants, I doubt it's going to hurt, you know, the restaurants, because they're all so new. They're all high quality restaurants that people enjoy. And does that work in terms of that? And I, I think it's probably even a need, like you said earlier, it might maybe need some more projects to establish in, in the area. That's just my opinion.
Any other comments?
All right. Hearing none, may I have a motion? Motion to approve, but I have, motion to approve made by Councilman Sage, seconded by Councilman T. Tanner. Clark, please read the roll on bill number fifteen dash twenty-five.
Mr. Tanner.
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
No.
No. Mr. Vey?
Yes.
Mr. Shabazz?
No.
Mr. Prey?
Yes.
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 Mr. Rupp? Mr. Rupp? I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote it out. Mr. Tann? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
President Chetwell?
Yes.
The stuff has been seven to. But the record showed that bill number fifteen dash twenty-five was passed by a vote of seven to two. We now move on to unfinished business, is there any unfinished, finished business? Seeing none, we move on to new business, is there any new business? Seeing none, we move on to old business, is there any old business? Seeing none, we move on to privilege of the floor, please listen carefully to the following analysis. The public is invited to address the council on any item that was not on tonight's agenda. The time limit of three minutes shall be enforced for those wishing to speak during privilege of the floor. Before you speak, please sign in and give your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only once during this section of the agenda. The council attorney will keep time and will let you know as your time is expiring. Please use appropriate language and volume when addressing the council. Also, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council. Please refrain from directing your remarks to other members of the public or in attendance to them. Violations of these instructions could result in the forfeiture of your remaining time. Finally, the council does not normally respond to questions or comments posed during privilege of the floor. And with that, we would like here from our first guest.
Hi, my name is Terry Brown, I live in six fifteen, something guy in South Bend. I have been watching health and meetings for some twenty twenty-three, most of the time. And I think, you know, if I want to thank you all for your service and your taking, it's been a lot of work, and, yeah. Uh, those things to be able to meet, but not watching. I heard someone complaining about that all day meeting office, and said, oh, tell me. And I had an experience recently, and I thought I was telling a little story. I am calling it my recent harrowing experience, E B I. Without going into my medical history, I'll just say that I start my stories in a New York studio and say, don't call me. First comes my doctor, way too young, of course, but diagnosed, you know? So I knew he was supremely qualified for spotting anything. And the doctor said, that's the nurse. She comes in with long ears, and she was blonde, and her name is Guadalupe. And she might have been a Democrat. Well, of course, I know that Democrats are being carried over our southern borders in thundering wars to invade our cities and U.S. farms. Thank God my sense for home safety. I gave Guadalupe her life, they sent me upstairs. My first night of, now she's assembled as a very kind woman. A kinder. My second night there, also turned kinder. My DNA, not from Africa, but an African American. My physical therapist that I had, if I could actually walk around the horse, Asian. And then, horror, 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 every morning, AM, my doctor, from India, was a beautiful lady. By the third day, I was saying to myself, well, I don't know why, yes, they're right. They're being prevented from working here, from the fourteen or fifteen people in and out of my room, there were two by then. One volunteered to ask if I wanted to test their doctors, and another was social working, to make sure I had my, and quickly sent home alone. And I thought, oh, I know this girl. They're downstairs across the street, they're running the hospital, they're running our insurance company, they're running our government, all sixty percent of politicians, CEOs, presidents. I think the white side is not doing that. At any rate, I felt that my duty to report is to let you know, E B I and the community, that hospitals might mine is a temple in the E B I. Are you going to get rid of it? I don't know. Diversity everywhere, I was obsessed from every side. And quickly, I hope there's these services, of course, they're very, very important out there, we want to look that out, too. Any rate, I gave my report. If anyone feels a need to present today, you have my information, I say, God, don't keep that out of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone else, Mr. Carissa?
This is the same council, Andrew from New Carile, thanks for your work. Quite, quite a, it's, it's, um, I want to, it's, it's, uh, we haven't gone in, did you go out? Uh, they're talking about belting on the wetlands, south of their current site, which is south of two. I, I, I want to recognize Amazon was, was getting involved in the community. They were a part of the community, they went and went in, they wanted to be in New Carile. Uh, and, and they're doing a very nice job, I mean, I finished a meeting, uh, the spirit of the meeting last week, and we did gentlemen there from the advanced team, I guess, they're, they're giving everybody ready for what's coming. And there's, everybody I've dealt with, I've been very accommodating, very willing to work with whatever we, whatever I've suggested, whatever other things the town talked about, Amazon Amy, always, you know, it's been a man named Tony, I met a, a Black Path man, uh, last week, like he's here on, from Silicon Valley. Uh, just willing to work with us, and want to be a part of the community. I, I really appreciate you for that. But it doesn't tell me, um, how, I, I, I'd say want to be a part of the community, but I can guarantee to you, nobody else in that community would consider filling in those wetlands and these things. And I think if you just agree to want to be a part of the community, and if you can convince, you can talk to anybody, you can talk to, like, our council, or anybody who can, to get through to them, that it's just not a good idea to fill in those wetlands. Thank you. Anyone? Quick, next one.
Good evening, that was the last, we went six seven seven up in those, uh, settings. Uh, that was another beautiful day, but I want to remember that I was here today. And I spotted a blue car, flying toward the Himalayas, where I counted eighteen months this year. I wonder how long they will be there, as they are certainly moving after several years, it will change even habitat. Maybe have a hard time finding a new member, who, in central counties, in the current climate, to be here. We do, money is the bottom line, and it's all about money until it is. I ask that we search beyond the obvious and common two choices we are typically given of yes and no, Republican or Democrat, development or environment. To me, it's not all about the bottom line, but more about where we draw the line. And since the town has set a line right now between the one wetland side in question, southeast of those years, and the several dozen Amazon stranded ones. You and many others here have more choices on where and how fun, plan, context, and dreamers are made as one, private individuals, two, individual bits of representative, and three, collective support. These approvals do not have to be all or nothing, as Amazon is teaching, and has often debated in the county council, such as Easton United, and at the Board of Commissioners of Lake. Two cases in point on parties and negotiating include the solar farms ordinance and the Israel regulation last year. This body is very capable of a gas being there a co-face. We are neither leniency nor outside in figures, and we ask that you exercise your ABCs for the Amazon weapons. Amazon can afford it, and we need the weapons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rupp.
Mr. Chetwell? I, I was planning to make a statement under old business, I think I missed my chance there. And then, but our guest went and speaks, and then I'll give you, I'll see you to make your statement afterwards. Excellent, thank you, I'm going to do that. All right. Has anyone else in the room who should take advantage of privilege of the floor? Saying no one, is there anyone online who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Saying no one, I will close privilege of the floor, and we'll go back to old business, and not Mr. Rupp, it is old business.
Thank you. So a number of people have brought up concerns about wetlands in the Amazon area. And I had a chance to visit the site, and I was going to propose an agenda to discuss that and share some information. That agenda was denied, so it wasn't allowed to be a part of this meeting tonight. And it was denied based on the new rules that this council operates under. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to still talk about it, I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I think doing so is responsive to the community and the, the concerns that have been brought up with the last, Mr. Rupp, you did it today, was because we don't list those things. But you're welcome to speak on it right now. I mean, I, you know, put together a, a presentation, you know, some talking points and issues. So I think it was, it was really meant to be an agenda item that people could see ahead of time. Why don't we just be up on the screen? Why don't we discuss that, and we'll find a way for you to, we'll see if that's possible, okay? Let's, you and I discuss. I'm, I'm happy anyway, that could be, that can happen. Okay, thank you. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes. Question returned by Mr. Vick, seconded by Mr. Tanner, all favor say aye.